Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 13th regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Will all members who are present please indicate so in roll call? Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans virtually.
Ms. Hannah, I know is going to be absent to a family obligation. Mr. McClellan?
Present.
And Ms. Lusky, present. We have a form of four members, so I'll call the meeting to order. Will all those who are present and able, please stand for the collective minutes.
Even Cory.
Thank you, Cory. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the good of the order, Cory, do you have a flag there that you were looking at?
I was looking around the corner.
Okay, no good, good, because that's where the flag is. Perfect.
Okay, so as usual, we will start with a opportunity for public comment. But a quick reminder that this portion of the meeting is reserved for topics that are not otherwise on the agenda and just for public comments. It is not an opportunity for debate at this point in the meeting. If you do have something to say, we would love to hear it, and please state your full name and address before addressing the committee. Also note, if you are watching the meeting from home, you can participate using the Q and A feature on Zoom, and you can access this meeting using the Zoom link that was shared with the agenda with this meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on Cohasset 143 TV and on Facebook via Cohasset Live Streaming. For the second for any public comment, we have just an invited guest today. We'll have an opportunity later to make a public comment. Everyone is enjoying their summers.
We don't see anything in the Q and A.
I don't see that, so we will move on. So we're actually moving straight to part C, the superintendent's report. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Sarah Shannon.
Great, thank you, and welcome back, school committee. We worked together at all in July, but there was a lot that happened in July, and so I'm gonna share out a bit around what's been going on in the summer. But the very first thing I'd like to do is invite Mr. John Scopoletti to the table and introduce him to the community and to all of you. John is our new Cohasset Middle School Principal. We spent a good amount of time in, at the end of June and into July, conducting a search. As people know, John Mills has left Cohasset and Cohasset Middle School and is now serving as the Assistant Superintendent in Carver. And while we wish him well, we also wanted to fill the big shoes that he has left, but I think we have done a really great job. We had a great pool of candidates and a strong representative committee that worked over the summer to narrow the candidate pool down to six, who we brought in and scheduled interviews for. And John rose to the top. And when we brought him in for a finalist day, he was able to meet with students, parents and caregivers, staff and leadership. And every group across the board had wonderful things to share about John. So we are very excited that he accepted our offer. He comes to us having a breadth of experiences, everything from having started his teaching career, working as a educational support professional at the Perkins School for the Blind, to being a longtime classroom teacher in English, which go English teachers, I can count myself a part of that. And then a department head, six through 12, and so it, and then also worked at South Shore both tech club as a teacher and as a director of curriculum and instruction. So he comes to us with a wealth of knowledge, all secondary experience, lots of time spent working with and leading middle school curricular and school-based initiatives. He has hit the ground running. He has his very first, well, I guess his second day, he attended our leadership retreat and has been meeting with teachers and getting to know the district and actually has started calling. His goal is to, I'll let him talk about it, but his goal is to call every parent of all of the middle schoolers and is well on his way. And so we're very excited to welcome you, John, to the community and to the district and to the middle school.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. I really do feel like I did the lottery. I just feel incredibly grateful. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm thrilled to be a part of this leadership team. I'm thrilled to be part of the middle school community. And I'm really excited about all of the great work that we as a community will be able to do together. Of course, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but as Superintendent Shannon had mentioned, for me, the most exciting part so far has been talking with the parents and caregivers that I've been able to call so far. And just hearing about the kids, right? I mean, that's the best part, obviously. That's why we're here. I'm very eager for the orientation that we're gonna have for sixth graders next week, just to finally meet some more kids. I've met a handful here and there, but I'm really excited to welcome them in and really just to get to know and be a part of the community and just continue to extend the great work that John Mills did and that we will continue to do as the Cohasset Middle School. So thank you very much. I'm really excited to be.
Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations. I've had the pleasure of meeting you several times now, and I think that you will be a wonderful fit for our school, and you're very lucky.
Thank you.
Do any other members of the committee have other words that they would like to say to Mr. Scopoletti?
Welcome. And excited to have you here. You will find out if you haven't already, I'd love your idea about reaching out to parents. In fact, I think my wife got a middle schooler myself, mentioned that she got a note that says that you might actually start randomly calling parents, which I think is excellent. We have a very involved set of parents here, but we also have some parents who, you know, can profit from, you know, kind of pulling them in to the school community. So I definitely applaud that, and I think that much of successful tenure for a principal here in Cohasset hinges on the ability to form relationships with the parent community. So the fact that you're coming in and focusing on that, I think is a real tailwind for you. So glad that you're here and look forward to what we're gonna do going forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck with everything. We're excited to have you. As Principal Mills said when he was outgoing to me, he said that he thought he had done a lot of great, you know, foundational level work here, and that he was, that it was the right time for someone to come in and build on that, and he was excited to see what someone would do, and we're excited to have you. And we look forward to great things under your tenure here as the principal of the middle school, which is a very high-performing school for our district. And as you are well aware, a very unique sort of development time in childhood. So it does require a lot of expertise and energy and enthusiasm, and I think that we believe that you were bringing all those things. So good luck to you. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And you're free to slide out.
If you'd like to stop the term.
Yeah, there you go. In other updates, I want to take a moment and acknowledge and congratulate Principal Scott and all of the high school staff for the commendations from the New England Association of Schools in College, otherwise known as NASS. In the spring, the high school went through their decennial accreditation process, and they received recently the letter that awarded them continued accreditation for the next 10 years. The letter came in and highlighted a lot of commendations for the school. The process itself is long and intense, and I want to thank and congratulate the high school staff for the work that they did this year just to make that happen. It's actually a multi-year process to make that happen. And of course, all of the work they do every day that led up to the commendations and the award. In the fall, once we get going again, Principal Scott will come to the school committee and share more details about the actual process. He will share more about the commendations and the recommendations that were made. So we'll look forward to that. And in the summer, despite what many people think, it's a busy time for us here in schools. And two things that have really been going on have been facilities work and hiring. And so want to be able to share some updates on both of those things. So first, some building updates. The middle school and high school fire alarm system is well underway and almost done. The, not repair, we're getting a replacement of the fire alarm system. It's expected to be mostly complete by next week when new teachers arrive on the 21st, and will be fully done by the 27th when all of our staff returns. They've been working a lot of hours. They, you know, have been through the entire building. And in a few days, we'll have a whole new fire alarm system that is up and running and really able to keep this building and all of the people in it safe. Wi-Fi upgrades have also been happening in all of the buildings. They're on track to be completed by next week. They have been happening at all four schools and actually across the town. But I'm just reporting out on the school piece. What still has to happen once they complete all of those upgrades is they'll come in and they'll do heat mapping just to make sure that they're all working appropriately. Really, we need all the people to be in the building for that to happen, just to make sure that people are connecting to the right spots. As you know, we were also upgrading some of our safety systems, some cameras in the P A system at Osgood India Hill. All of those things have been done, so that's great news. We also have an unanticipated project. So the central office location has a garage. It also has a lot of storage. People might recognize that from the Bitcoin, not Bitcoin mining, that's that area. And over the years, that space has flooded. In July, when we had those massive, massive rains, there was the worst flood that has happened there yet. And while that houses a lot of storage materials, the biggest concern was it also houses all of the electrical supply for the entire building. So Nick and Brian Joyce worked together and recognized that we can't risk having a flood in there again, because if, what Nick shared with me is if that ever flooded again and did impact the electrical system, the entire building would be without electrical for quite some time, and we wouldn't be able to occupy the building. So with some quick work, they were able to bring in some folks to locate the problem and to repair the problem. If you can, have you been, if you've been out in that parking lot area, you will see that the majority of the work is almost done. I think all that's left is to repair the road a little bit. But we are greatly appreciative of how quickly they attended to that issue. Nick, Brian Joyce, Michelle Leary, and Chris Senior, it was about a $70,000 fix, and there was a recognition that those funds needed to be allocated swiftly to address that emergency repair. So we're grateful to all of them. Additionally, work has been continuing with the Osgood roof. Our OPM and design team have been working hard this summer to complete the schematic design process and the engineering study. They submitted the schematic design to the MSBA in July. Since their submission, we met with the MSBA to review costs in the total project budget. The total estimated cost of the roof project is not to exceed $5,858,000. This includes contingency costs. The MSBA has determined their reimbursement rate will be at 32.46%, which means that their grant will be about $1.9 million, and the cost to the district will be just under $4 million at a maximum. We're gonna be attending the next MSBA board meeting, which will accept the schematic design and support that total funding, the total project budget. And then once that board meeting happens, we can start to move on with the next steps in the process, which will include allocating of funds, which will happen at the special town meeting. It will include starting to build out in detailed construction documents, hiring of contractor, and eventually the work. The work is not expected to be done until the summer of 2026. And the majority of the funds can be supported with the school facility capitalization, capital stabilization fund. No one talking with Chris, he may, because there are other building projects happening in the town, he may look at, you know, other ways. But we know that the funds are available. And so that's something that we'll continue to work with him on leading up until the special town meeting in November.
Would you like to pause here? It looks like Mr. Evans has a comment.
Sure.
And I'm wondering if we'll take it now.
Sure. Yeah, this is absolutely my lane. Other things, not so much, but this definitely is. So a couple of questions for you. The repair costs for the utility room, do we know where, how those are being funded right now? And then should we be expecting some sort of adjustment transfer? Or will the school committee need to do a capital request for that repair going forward?
Nope. From what I understand, they just, the town has allocated the repair costs. So they got approval, emergency approval to do that, and we're going through advisory to get that done.
Okay, so it's coming out of the advisory fund. Gotcha. That was the question. Okay, but usually we have to, there has to be, advisory has to get re-topped off, right? If we tap that, that's really the only way we can tap money without going through a town meeting cycle, the advisory reserve fund, but then it has to get topped off later. So something to follow up on, just to be sure, we don't have, you know, we're not counting money that's already encumbered or expended if we're expected to top that off backwards from our facilities fund.
In my conversations with Chris, that was not part of the conversation.
Okay, gotcha. Other thing is the Osgood number, I want everyone to hear that again, right? Which is it's $5.8 million to do one, our like our smallest building. And again, I think that the fact that we're in the accelerated repair program here is just phenomenal, because again, that's $1.9 million, but the final price is still, as you said, four. Our school stabilization fund gets a million and a half dollars a year, right? And so when we look at that fund and we think about the projects that are in front of us, this is why we have to be so careful about how we spend that fund, because just this one roof is more than two years of allocations. And we don't have enough cash money to do it on time. If we wait another year, we would, but we're gonna have to do some sort of probably bonding, which is not a problem. But whenever, I want to put this out there, because when people talk about, well, we've got this fund, we've got that fund, we've got all this money, it's already going to the highest priority projects. And the fire alarm system, right? This was something which the study was funded last town meeting, one year ago, right? And then we got the study and we funded it special. We've executed it. Within a year, we went from funding to full execution. I think it's a phenomenal success, and that's exactly why we have this fund. So we have to be sure as a committee and as a town, we understand that these funds need to be available to execute the same level of speed on these high priority projects. And we're not using it as a shopping list. We're not using it, you know, with any sort of, you know, relaxation. This is high priority only, and we're gonna defend those high priority projects, as we can't not do it. I also want to also just point out and thank the tech team, the Wi-Fi repair. The amount of Wi-Fi units that had to get installed across town was incredible. And I know that people had Wi-Fi connection issues. I've had Wi-Fi connection issues throughout the town. And I'm thrilled to hear that the funding that we put towards that, that the school submitted, the town approved, has been executed on, and I think that's gonna make a huge difference. It's not just the Wi-Fi modules, it's also all the switches behind the scenes. So it's not just the antennas, it's all the communications between you. It's a huge project. So, you know, Rob and I, the entire team over there that put that together, our team as well, I think that long overdue, and I'm glad we got it done. So there's my soapbox. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Yeah, while we're on Osgood. So, and Mr. Evans, I can share this passion for the stabilization fund. So are we able to, what's the current, do you have the current balance of the stabilization fund?
So Sue's been working with the Newtown accountant to figure out the exact balance. We think it's just over, it's between two and three million dollars, but we're trying to get that exact.
It's about 2.1, yeah.
And I guess, but the only debit on that should have been the fire alarm, right?
So also the, the initial cost for the OPM and the design firm.
Correct.
So there's that. And then the, trying to think what else, because those were the things since I have been here.
Did they take the D A O, finish the flooring out of there?
Potentially, the floors.
No, the floors were not. Yeah, so the fire, sorry. Yeah, so the floors came out of capital, not out of stabilization fund. But yeah, I mean, the fire alarms were a million.
Oh, that's, that was gonna be my question, because we estimated one and a half. So will we, so this is gonna be down 26, I guess, and we don't have to do this now, because it's summer. But, and I know we're gonna do a budget subcommittee, but I'd love to model forward what our balances look like from that stabilization fund to make sure we can do that. I'm a little bit, and I'd like to learn more, not necessarily in this forum, but at some point, on the, that Chris Senior moving stuff around, because that, again, we gotta be very jealously guarding that stabilization fund. It's a purpose-built thing, and I don't wanna get involved in a horse trading situation.
It wasn't that. It was, he's trying to decide if it's smarter to bond some of it or to use it. And so he was, he's looking at that, and that's an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be short. I mean, if we, the thing is that with MSBA and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, if we're in this round, we're gonna have to appropriate money in special town meeting in the fall for the roof. Is that correct? Do I have my understanding correct on that one? Okay, which means that we're gonna be ahead of the next million and a half dollars of funding that would go into the fund next summer. So next summer, we could get the balance up to 2.1 plus 1.5, 3.6. We're still a little bit short. But it looks like we're about a year short here, but we have to do it this special. So we'd have to put in a funding mechanism that bonded against that, that fund. And so we just have to work out the mechanic for that, or Chris Towne Accountant.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna walk through that, because it's gonna, I mean, the whole point of this and where we came to town on this state of stabilization fund is to pay for things like this. And so if we're going to special town meeting to ask for money for something that we have had a million and a half dollars a year to plan in advance for, knowing, I just wanna make sure that we've, we've got the story correct and how the balance has worked out.
Absolutely. There's a question. If you want me to read it. It's from Catherine, Catherine Dugan. I believe the balance is cool stabilization fund is 2.1 million. Where's the 1.9 million coming from? That's what she's asking.
The 1.9 million dollars is the reimbursement, the grant from the MSBA. It's the 32.46%.
But you might be asking the 1.9, if the current balance, 2.1, where's the delta to get you to four? And that would be 1.5 from the next allocation, because we're 1.5 every year, and then we're 400 grand short. That's what we probably have to bridge.
So.
Yeah, so we could, we could do a, the thing would be you'd bond, you'd issue a bond, but it wouldn't be a tax override, right? It'd be within the 1.5 million dollar fund. We're allowed to borrow against the future proceeds of that fund. So it would not be a, it's just like we do with town hall, actually, this circle. Again, my apologies, I'm wearing my capital budget hat, where the amount of money that were spent on the town hall repairs exceeded the available capital stabilization fund cash balance. And so we agree that there was gonna be a, you know, a bonding period, I think, whatever was five years for those repairs that would then reduce, obviously, the availability of that fund for the next five years. So we do the same thing here as well, where we would bond against the next couple of years. But that also means if we do that, we can't count on 1.5 million dollars in year three, four, five, six, right? It's gonna be reduced by whatever we, so just, we have to keep a current accounting in our heads, because, you know, we've got Osgood, we're gonna have Deer Hill, we've got other things to do as well. And so we just have to be very judicious about every, of every piece of it.
Mr. Evans, would you mind describing what a bond project is for people that might not be familiar with what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, so, and again, not, I'm speaking as just an elected member of the board, not as a financial advisor or anything. So I will share my knowledge of it, but this can come from Towne. Fine, yeah. So it would be, basically, the town is allowed to take out debt on future on projects as long as that debt is something we can pay for, we can pay the payments on that debt within the funding that we already projected coming in. So it's within the current tax amount. So we currently bring in 1.5 million, a little bit more than that, in the school stabilization fund. So if we have a project that's more than 1.5 million, we're allowed to issue debt and have 1.5 come from this year and 5, you know, 0.5 come from next year, that sort of thing. We can do it among a different amount of time as well. You know, there's different benefits to all that. That just means we can afford something now and pay for it over time. Does not mean a tax increase, but it does mean that we would have less available cash until that debt is paid off, just like any type of debt. Is that sufficient, Mr. McCall?
Yes, I just thought it might be helpful for folks that are listening, especially people might be asking questions. You never know what background people might have, and, you know, all of us live this, and so we're a little bit more familiar with these municipal government terms. Some folks might not.
And we put anyone who's paying attention to sleep.
I knew you did describe it the best out of any of us, so that's why I asked you to do it.
All right.
All right, so a different and another MSBA, the MSBA update is that they reached out about the core project, the middle school, high school project. And we have been invited to be a part of the senior study for the core process. And so they are coming specifically to look at the high school. That is the, that was our prioritized SOI, Statement of Interest. And in my conversation, they are well aware that it is a co-located building that shares all of the same systems and many of the same spaces. So given that she has, she being the woman, her name is Jennifer, at the MSBA, who I spoke with, has asked that not only do we speak to and tour the high school, but we speak to and tour the middle school and have both principals in attendance at that meeting. So that meeting will happen on September 9th at 2:00 PM. It will be a meeting with several MSBA officials, as well as school and town officials. And really, that just means that they're coming to learn more about the buildings and to see the buildings and to be able to better gauge where and when this project should be accepted into their core program. I recently learned that this year, the MSBA received 27 statements of interest from 20 different towns. That is a much lower number of statements of interest than what they typically have received. And in the last two to three years, they have accepted into their core program between 18 and 22 projects. So where they are coming out, and the numbers are a little bit different this year, you know, I don't know what that means. I would like to think that that gives us a little bit of a leg up in the process, in addition to having the revised statement of interest and the completed feasibility study. But I will certainly keep people up to date as that process continues.
Just Superintendent Shannon, full disclosure, this is the third time that they have visited the school, but they have to take it year by year. So just because they came previous years, they can't, so it's all part of the process. But it is unlikely they would, you know, be doing that if they weren't seriously considering the school and taking the time. So I think it's, you know, you never know, but it's certainly, I think, better than not hearing anything.
Absolutely. It was better than having them dismiss us before the senior study part of the process. Yes. So those are our building updates. We've also been doing a lot of hiring. And along with Mr. Scopoletti, we did hire Kate Darling, who is the new assistant principal at the high school. She joined us at the school committee meeting before the end of the school year. And they've both been wonderful additions to our district leadership team. We have filled all but one staff position. We are still looking, if anyone out there who might be watching knows of a high school special ed teacher who would love to work in the district, we would love to hear from those folks. And other than that, we are actually all hired. We are, I would say that our principals did an excellent job hiring this year. We did ask them to hire with a specific lens on being economical with their hiring for multiple reasons. One is just the budget that we're trying to stay within. But also, we knew that if we could hire economically, we could potentially bring back the French position to lower the class sizes in both Spanish and French at the high school. and not have to teach multiple levels together. And we have been able to to successfully do that. So that's been great news. Um, I will put a caveat around all of the hiring and say, I'm not sure I've ever worked in administration where it wasn't a surprise something as we near the start of the school year. But right now, um, we are doing really well, knock on wood. And um, our new teachers are gonna join us on the twenty first to start new teacher orientation. So we're very excited to welcome them in. Many of them have been in already um, and around, and we've met all of them. And so I think we have a really great um, new induction of teachers coming our way.
And and just to be clear, these aren't ads to staff. These are all replacement positions for existing positions.
Correct, except for the fourth grade at at Deer Hill, which we knew was gonna be an additional position. Um, the other thing that we do during the summers to continue to build our plans um, for where we're going in terms of goals, work ahead of us. Um, and this year, we really are focusing all of that work on our new strategic plan and getting, we're getting ready to share all of that information with you again as we start the school year and with the staff. We also, as I mentioned earlier, held our leadership retreat earlier this month, where we also included all of our department heads this year. It's the first time we've been able to do that in some time here in the district. It's an exciting shift for us, because our department heads really are important instructional leaders, and they play a large role in us being able to implement our new strategic plan and achieve the bold goals that we've set. Um, as a whole leader fifteen, including the department heads, we're reading the book, Leading Strategically, so that we can maximize our effort and impact across the district. And wanted to throw it out to the committee that if anyone's interested in that book, we can make sure that you get a copy. Um, and finally, wanted to share with you something new that we've done this summer. Um, we introduced optional staff book clubs across the district, and they have been really well received. We had over twenty staff members who participated in book clubs this summer, and several of those people actually participated in multiple book clubs. Um, each book that was chosen was directly tied to the strategic plan and our goals and is led by either a school or a district administrator. And each book has been meeting either in person or virtually over the summer to talk about the book and its significance to the work that we're doing. Um, the conversations have been really rich and meaningful. The books that we're reading are Never Enough, a book called Ten to Twenty-Five, Fish in a Tree, and Radical Listening. Never Enough is, of course, our district community read for any adult or student in the community who wants to read it and join us at the September twenty-fourth forum. There is still lots of time between now and September twenty-fourth to grab that book and um, and get it read. Button Woods has lots of copies. Um, we invite everyone to be a part of that conversation. And additionally, we're gonna continue to offer those same books as book clubs in the fall and the spring for staff. Um, and the success of the book clubs is really exciting, because it has allowed us to draw attention to the priorities of our strategic plan and the commitment of the staff to continuous improvement for themselves, our own learning, and the district has been really amazing. So that's the the work that we've been doing this summer. Um, I'm gonna move into some transportation. Uh, no, we'll hold on transportation up once. That's it for me for right now.
If anyone has any other comments or questions from the committee, I will.
One, one question on the, this, at this point in the process with the MSBA, we're we're just, we're at step one again, to Craig's point, like, we're just, they're visiting the school, we're going through a step. Okay, so it's not like we, there's any steps we get to skip, because we've done this so many times. Okay, just making sure. Okay, thank you.
No, they will, they, if it had been last year that they did the senior study, they might not come, but because it's been two, two years, then they come out.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you. And that's, at this point, there's no, we're not in any determination or any decision-making. This is just a walkthrough type of, okay, that's where we are, just so anyone who's listening or watching is wondering what an update is, the update is, people are gonna show up and walk around. That's all there is. Okay, great, thank you.
I'll just comment, I love the um, the the book clubs over the summer. I feel like it's summer is such a nice time to rejuvenate, regenerate, get inspired. And I think secondarily, just that the sort of connections that can happen amongst um, uh, administrators, faculty and staff, doing something like that is a nice way to stay connected over the summer in a way that has has to do with your professional lives, but also, I think, allows you to develop personal relationships as well. So I think that's a great way to keep the team feeling going over the summer. So thank you.
Been super fun.
Right, um, then we will move on to a block F. Oh, block D, sorry, uh, Budget, Resources and Governance, and we'll start with you, Ms. Owen.
Thank you. It will be brief. I'm just gonna give you a a summary of how we ended the F Y twenty-five year, which was a a year of struggle, um, but we did okay. You know, the approved budget was the twenty-four million, two hundred and fifty-one, eight hundred and six dollars. Um, total expenditures was twenty-five million, four, um, six hundred and seventy-nine, resulting in a budget shortfall. Cover the deficit of the town provided a tranche of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, leaving the remaining balance of four thousand one twenty-seven, which was returned to the town, um, probably just because one of the purchase orders canceled, um, what came in later. Otherwise, there would have been a dale. We have no open purchase orders. We have not come with anything over the summer. We were very, very tight this year. Um, everything had to be, if they needed, they had to purchase it, and if they didn't need it, they didn't purchase it. Recently, the town had approved um, to give us additional funding of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, to balance our budget. However, the funding ultimately needed was seven hundred and fifty-seven due to two anticipated happens. Um, one was payroll posting ever, error. The first payroll of F Y twenty-five was inadvertently recorded in twenty-four. Um, and it wasn't until the new, we have a, should say, new town accountant, we're about to have a new town accountant, um, consultant, um, realized that that the prior town accountant had posted to the wrong year. Um, so she since corrected it and spoke to Chris Senior um, select board advisory to see if they could fund us the different, to show them up. The other piece was electricity bill. Um, a bill came in with a correction saying we'd been charged the wrong rate, and they plucked a thirty thousand dollar bill on us, um, which had to be paid for June thirtieth, so that was the other piece um, that that brought us up together. Those two were just with decreased funding by about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Hopefully, we never have that problem again. We're very diligently not to end up in the same place. Circuit breaker, again, um, also helped us out. We were initially supposed to receive um, one million, one million, one hundred and eleven, hundred thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Um, additionally, a fifth payment came through of one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fourteen, um, which brought our circuit breaker up to one point two. Um, so that also, we made some of the deficits. Um, we were able to um, bring down some of the revolving accounts and do some shifts, um, because we had two revolving accounts that were in the negative, that we can't, um, by September thirtieth, they cannot be in the negative. So, um, we'll talk about that. So we're on grants. Um, we have expended, we seem to have expended all grants. Um, there's no carryover. And then the revolving, you can see what what the balances are. So the athletics is down to one hundred and fifty-three, mi- minus one hundred and fifty-three thousand. Um, currently, with money coming in, it's down to one hundred and forty-six thousand, because I deployed um, fees for fall. Um, so that one fifty-three or one forty-six should decrease. And the other one was the school transportation, um, currently is in the negative of fifty-seven, seven eighty. Um, when I looked at it today, it sounded minus thirty-three thousand and was collecting transportation fees, so that, yeah, should go away as well.
Why are they in the negative? You said. For what expenses?
So, well, it funds, it funds certain number of F T Es of of positions and supplies materials or athletic revolving. Covers a lot of coaching stipends, the the refs, um, the software that he uses to schedule, so it's in with athletics. Half of the, half the, half of the transportation is covered by revolving, and the other half is school budget. Um, so we've had to do some shifts, I mean, as much as we could this year, with the school budget versus the revolving. Currently, those two revolving accounts are frozen. Money can come in, money cannot go out, um, until those balances are brought back into the which is one raised fees, um, to help offset those deficits.
So, sorry, just clar- clarify, uh, I, the mic cut out. Frozen, you said there's, there's no money coming out of those revolving funds right now? Is that what I just heard?
Uh, there's not.
Okay, so how are we then paying for things that these revolving accounts would usually pay for?
Right now, everything's coming out of the school budget. We can't continue to drive that deficit down, um.
No, I I I fully understand, yeah, this is supposed to be a revolving account, not a line of credit. Um, so, you know, we're we're operating not, not in a healthy way here. Um, so, but did we, in the F Y twenty-six budget, is, do we have uh, an increase which accounts for the fact that we can't tap revolving fund revenue? I mean, we're cutting off revenue. We're 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 putting in one fifty-three, nine, ten, just to get, just to get even. We're gonna have a one fifty-three, nine, ten revenue gap in our budget. Um, have we accounted for that in F Y twenty-six projections?
We did, so, um, when we put the budget together, um, we increased utilities by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We increased supplies, materials for custodian. Um, we increased the athletics by a hundred thousand dollars, and we increased transportation by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, that 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 math still doesn't, doesn't work out, but we'll, we'll meet on this during our 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 normal meeting, um, so we don't take up the whole committee's time.
So just to share a little bit more is that um, we also anticipate that the cost may not be as high for athletics this year, because we have a, we'll have an extra working bus, and we now have the van. And so that will minimize, hopefully, the extra expenses in athletic transportation that we've had to incur. So hopefully.
Would it be possible to ask for just a little, any sort of memo or projection about when we could get to that revolving fund to zero based on, you know, revenue, I don't wanna say revenue, but but uh, fees collection, just so that the committee can have a little bit of understanding when this thing can level out. Um, if you, if that's easy to do, um, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, yeah. Absolutely.
And then the last piece is just the food service meals count. Um, obviously, participation was a little bit lower. We were up to eighty percent participation, which is phenomenal. Um, the last month, we were at sixty-seven point eight versus last year, we were at sixty. So we're still ahead. Um, and that's it. We, you know, extend my sincere thanks to all who played a role in addressing and helping close the budget deficit. Efforts were greatly appreciated. It was not, it's definitely not an easy task. Um, and it took a lot, it took a lot of hand, a lot of team members to to get us to a balanced place.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Um, I see Mr. Evans has a question, and then we'll um, allow other uh, members to chime in as well.
No, I just, now that I'm sitting on this committee, I wanna thank the town and everyone who's involved in the town for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar bridge. Uh, this is huge. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of, I think, stress right now when it comes to how things are funded. There's a lot of discussions, but I wanna point out that at town meeting, when it was proposed that the schools get an extra of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, town meeting supported that. Advisory supported that, select board supported that, right? So it's really easy to get the knives out, but when it came to time to step up and help us really give us a life raft, the town didn't hesitate. Now, we can't take that for granted. We can't be saying, hey, next year, we're gonna do that again. No. With raft, the life raft works once, and then it doesn't work as well. So, one, I'm grateful, and I think we all should be grateful for the town for what they did, and we should look forward and commit to doing our part to not put the town in that position again. Uh, and everyone, parents, teachers, us, other committees, let's all get to a collaborative space. Every budget is really hard right now. Every single one. We saw a six million dollars for a roof. Everyone's stressed out, but we can get through it if we do it smart, we do it collaboratively. There's a lot of really creative things we can do. So just saying, we're at a collaborative, we're at a collaborative point at town meeting with this life raft. Let's stay in that mode, and we can get through everything that's coming forward for us. So that's my speech.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Dyer?
Nothing here.
Just to address Mr. Evans's uh, statement, uh, I think that uh, our new superintendent brought exactly that um, spirit of collaboration. Um, I I've um, been only a few times where I've seen something like that um, done within the school with that scope. Um, and I think that uh, the town was certainly collaborative, but uh, our superintendent of schools, I think, um, demonstrated outstanding leadership around that budget um, issue and the way it was not only explained and presented to uh, our staff and our families, but also the way that Ms. Shannon uh, conceived innovative solutions uh, and and approaches in confronting the significant challenges. And 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 as, as I said, uh, when presenting at our joint select board meeting, um, the buck stops, uh, not with the superintendent of schools, but with the school committee, and we are solely responsible for any errors in the budget. And, you know, we will, I think, we 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 pledged at that meeting to do better, and I I echo Mr. Evans' sentiments. But I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that um, Superintendent Shannon, I think, uh, really delivered uh, in our time of need as well.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Um, and I actually, both of you, Mr. Evans and Mr. McClellan, took both the words out of my mouth. So um, for the sake of brevity, I will say I concur. Um, we do have a comment from uh, Stephanie Saunders of Ten Stratford Terrace, um, who writes in the school budget uh, summary slide, can you explain the reason the allocated money for utility cleaning supplies and sped transportation went down in twenty twenty-five? Given the prior year trends, this is confusing. So I'm not sure if there's a.
Not sure we did it. Provide, I don't remember providing that slide.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not sure where. Ms. Saunders, if you could um, let us know if this was one of the slides that was just presented. Um, our our comments are um, and discussion are going to be limited to that material. Um, so that if if you're referring to something that was just shown, we can certainly bring that back up and um, talk about it.
And maybe the the final slide was in the summary report? Oh, gotcha. It wa- it wasn't, okay.
It should, it was someone.
She just, she just repopulated it.
Okay, it's um, Ms. Owen's last slide that was not um, was not there yet. Okay. Um, thank you. So I think um, those look like they're ex- expenditures, not budgeted current um, pieces, but someone who's an expert should speak to that. Yeah.
And.
So can someone answer their question?
Yeah, no reason. Go ahead. So when you look at the report, it's F Y twenty-three is expended, and F Y twenty-four is expended versus F Y twenty-five is the budget amount. That's what she's referring to. And then you can see in F Y twenty-five, the expended amount. And then the remaining balance of the one four, four one two seven, that was returned. I don't know if that answered your question.
So, yeah, so just to be clear, so like, if I look at utilities in F Y twenty-five, it was budgeted six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, but we actually spent nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Correct.
In special ed. Looking for special ed transportation.
It's zero zero six zero.
Yeah, so we budgeted three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and spent three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars approximately. So that didn't go, that went down a tiny bit. Um, and the cleaning supplies were budgeted at sixty-one thousand, and we spent a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So I guess my question is, they don't, they didn't go down, the budgeted amount did not match the expended amount, which was part of our shortfall. they don't, they didn't go down. The budgeted amount did not match the expended amount, which was part of our shortfall and part of our problems for FY twenty five.
And, and just, we have a, and for Ms. Saunders, we have a budget and resources subcommittee meeting where we're going to dive into this for next Monday. So if you want to learn more, I'd encourage you to attend that. So we can look at this kind of with a five tooth comb and feel free to send the committee any of your questions as well.
Mr. Evans, do you know what time that is?
It's eleven AM. It can be over, we can send a Zoom invite if she's available, so.
So I think it was posted to the town today and it has all of the information on how to attend.
Correct, yep. It's, it's on the, the website, right? If you go to the calendar, the Agenda Center, it is there. Yep, thanks, thanks, Superintendent Shannon.
And thank you, Ms. Saunders, for engaging with us. We appreciate it. So no further questions on there. We're going to, oh, we have transportation.
Transportation update. Yeah. Do you want to start on the electric bus?
On the electric bus. So we, we met multiple times throughout the last six to eight months regarding what to do with the electric bus. Came to an agreement between the energy committee, the town manager, assistant town manager, central office, and we decided to terminate our contract with them. The bus has not actually serviced us very well at all. Doesn't hold a charge, infrastructure problems. Now we're just trying to, to figure out the logistics of what happens with the bus now that we've terminated the electric bus. Because we're no longer parking where the charger is. I think it probably has a small charge right now. But we're in the process of deciding, working out an agreement of, do they take it back? Is there some type of potential asset to us in it? Michelle, the assistant town accountant has been working with a state grant that provided pot of funding to figure out what's the best solution. We're not going to keep it, but I believe it may end up going back to the dealer that it was purchased from. But I'm not, I'm not sure that's the case right now.
What's, what's, what's going to happen with the charger? Because we do have rights to that charger. I think that's ours and we can have it moved. Someone's supposed to, it's a contractual obligation for someone to move that for us, so.
I believe there is take that back as well. The charger, whoever, has been slightly damaged. Got hit in the parking lot, a truck, trailer truck drove over part of it a few weeks ago, so we filed an challenge, filed an challenge, trying to see what's happening there.
It sounds like someone's responsible to fix the charger.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
But it's still, we're still in talks with, and now, I mean, heavily discussing what, what is going to happen. And now with the town level between the assistant town manager and the one person at N L.
Let's do, make sure we dust off that contract there, because I think we had some pretty favorable termination rights. So.
Yeah, and we're also preparing a document for the Capitol Planning Committee because without that bus, we don't have a spare bus. And so we are looking to request the ability to reallocate the funds that would have gone to the year's lease of the electric bus to be able to lease a diesel bus. And so we are working on pulling all of that together, hopefully getting that to them the end of this week or start of next week, and then hopefully we'll have that spare bus. This Capitol Planning Board will likely have to have an emergency meeting to real, to vote to allocate those, reallocate those funds. But we're working with them to, to get that process going and if not for the very first bit of school, the week after or so, hopefully have that spare bus, just in case something happens. And then in talking with Michelle, also having a conversation after that to see what happens really with the, any potentials money savings with the electric bus beyond that. And if that can be used to get another diesel bus as well, which would really help us out with transportation in general, but especially the athletics. So we've been in conversation with Michelle pretty regularly around that and have certain conversations with the capitals and the committee as well.
What's, what's the driving point? It sounds like this might not be the most convenient time to do this. If we've got school coming up and we'll be short of us, I suppose the driving point to terminate now as opposed to hang on for another.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. It's never provided, it's never, other than the first, the first few months, it's, it's never provided any transportation to students.
Really? So it hasn't even been used?
The last couple.
The first few months of the first year we had.
The charging station stopped working. They, the N L stopped servicing the charging station. And so we weren't even able to charge it the last couple of months of school.
And then it got hit by a truck.
The charging. The charging station, not the bus.
So we did request initially at Capitol an additional bus, which Capitol granted to us, to increase our routes because the buses were tight. So we're still planning on having nine routes instead of eight routes. And we're going to open pray that we return this capital request around quickly, which will give us a spare bus in case something breaks down and, you know, to, to help assist with athletics getting to and from, who also received a fourteen passenger activity van. So that should help us as well.
I, I just, I just want to clarify procedurally here. The, the Capitol Budget Committee can't approve this, right? It's an advisory committee, which means its votes go to town meeting. Town meeting is the only place that can reappropriate funds. So, I mean, you can email Capitol Budget all you want. They're not, they can make a recommendation, but the actual reallocation of funds, the only body in the town that can reallocate funds is town meeting. So advisory has their fun. We talked about that before, but so Capitol Budget could meet on this, make a recommendation, but it, it's still, they, the reallocation can't happen until town meeting anyway.
Just going back to Ms. Shannon, we'll have to clarify that.
Yeah, there, there, yeah, there may be other ways to get the funding, but just the.
Yeah, I think that's what we're.
Procedurally, it's not Capitol Budget doing anything.
Yeah, but, yeah, so maybe reallocate isn't the technical term that I should have used, but I, they have said that they're willing to work with us to be able to get a bus for the start of the school year.
There was a question on parking.
Yep, so the parking situation, just one of the hot button issues last year was a lot of people asked why we're paying to park the buses over at the lot over near Abashon. And as people have driven by, I hope that they can see that we actually have stopped renting parking space. We are parking our buses here at the school overnight and during the summer. And once the school year begins, our buses will continue to be parked here overnight. But when school is in session, they are going to be parked over at the ball field on North Main Street. And so we have been working with our new transportation director and we have a process for being able to transport the drivers between here and the ball field. And we think that this will be a really good way to save the money that we were spending each month in bus parking fees and still capitalize on as many spots as possible for students during the school day. Ms. Saunders made.
Yes, and so Ms. Saunders does have a follow up comment that she writes. To clarify, it seems the twenty twenty five expenditure for utilities, for example, could have been accounted for by looking at the prior year costs on utilities. I don't see how this was a surprise. I'll attend the subcommittee meeting, but think given the concerns amongst the community, this should all be spoken about as transparently as possible. Thank you. And yes, I think we all agree that all of this is transparent and that's why our committee meetings are public meetings and that they are posted in advance for anyone who would like to engage in forecasting and would like to share those expertise or have ideas to bring those forward.
Yeah, and I think we did talk very openly about that last year throughout the entire budgeting process.
Yeah, and we will continue to answer questions like that about, around the budget as we did.
Yeah.
Now we will move on to block E, which is community relations and communication. So we have, if we have any reports from school committee, subcommittees or liaisons, which I have a feeling we probably don't because school is not in session. Life is a little bit slow in the summer, but if anyone has something they would like to report on, I don't know if our, our finance subcommittee, have you met yet? No. So you'll have a report soon.
Monday, yeah, well.
Next meeting. All right, so we'll move on to school committee governance. And we still are not a full slate tonight, but I would propose that we move forward in creating our committees at this point just so that we are ready to hit the ground running. So it were during the school year. So unless other committee members take issue with that, that's what we will do. But it looks like I don't have in my packet the little list of committees.
I can pull it up if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you. So we do have several liaison and committee positions that have not yet been assigned for this year. And that school committee members serve as liaisons to each of the school buildings in the district, in case anyone sort of wondering what we're doing about what we're about to do with organizations within the town and that we do have several subcommittees. So currently, Mr. Dial and Mr. McClellan were our, on our school governance subcommittee. Mr. Carr and I served on the communications committee. Ms. Hannah and I served on food service and nutrition. Budget and resources was Mr. Carr and Ms. Hannah. So we could start with those. And we know that our budget and resources, we now have Mr. Dial and Mr. Evans in there.
If I just, for the sake of speed, I'm happy to just take all of Ted Carr's appointments. If everyone wants to stay on where they are, I, these are all things I'm comfortable with, but I'm also comfortable going through a piecemeal. But I just want to throw that out there for efficiency, if that was easier.
Mr. Dial, do you have anything that you need to change on your end?
No, I think, I think staying on the school governance and then being on budget resources is, is, is good for me.
Mr. McClellan?
That's fine. Remember that the collective bargaining process has yet to be fully concluded, so it's a continuation of the last bargaining period. So I think some continuity there makes sense. So, but I can help wherever else needed, but it seems like we're, we're good with the.
Okay, in, in terms of the collective bargaining, is that something that the chair should be involved in?
It was, it was one thought. I, I, I mean, I think ordinarily, Ms. Leskey, I would have suggested that the chair, I mean, it seemed like the, the chair and the vice chair were on those, right? So it makes sense, especially where superintendent eval, you, you, you have to be involved in that because you're going to be writing the summative. It's just that for collective bargaining, it, it, I don't know that it makes sense for you to come in media race. It just doesn't, it, it wouldn't make any sense regardless of position. So it may make sense for, you know, these categories.
What we could do is, just to, just to make it quick, superintendent eval is not until the summer, summer, spring?
No.
We're going to start.
Different.
Collective bargaining is going to be starting in October. So I could, just for, for brevity, I could stay on school governance and then be replaced after we get where we need to be as, as, as far as collective bargaining, or we could split it up at that time when that needs to be done.
There are like mid, mid year reviews. There's different parts to, it's not just the end for superintendent eval.
Yeah, but you could do what I did, just don't do that.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that Ms. Leskey's going to need to be involved in that somehow. And I, I mean, we just sort of switch out for, I mean, what happened was we combined like committees to these categories. I believe there was a chairperson dialed.
Yeah, we had, we had ten subcommittees, which seemed like a lot. And so we, we combined them into categories to have, have fewer, make better use of our time. So break it out. I'm happy to fall off if you'd like to go on. You know, happy to continue to consult our, you know.
Again, I, I think it makes zero sense for you to, to, to not be involved in the collective bargaining. This has been an ongoing process. It doesn't make sense for you to step out of that. It's just that where, I, I think either of us could be on the superintendent eval with Ms. Leskey. She just necessarily, I think, has to be a part of that. She, she just has to, I think, ex officio, so.
But we can't have three members.
You, you could, you could, what you could do is have three members. Not everyone would have to show up. You could post it at the whole of, of the whole if everyone showed up.
Or you could split out and just have a collective bargaining subcommittee.
That would make a lot of sense.
So.
Do you want to put a hold on that then and sort that through?
I think you just solved the problem.
Okay.
That's what we should do. So while you and I continue to serve on the collective bargaining subcommittee and then school governance, you drop out and Jen comes in. Excuse me, Ms. Leskey.
It's very professional though.
As long as we're.
Okay.
Can be.
So that's that. Mr. Evans, I don't know if your, your offer still stands as a basis for reshuffling the representative and liaison assignments. I actually have myself at two schools, although I believe it was you, Craig, who were, ended up liaising with Osgood. I'm happy to do one. I don't have the bandwidth for two.
Then, yeah, plug, plug me in at Osgood, that's fine.
Thank you.
And, yeah, that, that, the rest of the, PEB's good. Legislative fine, select board fine. Elder Fair is fine. Yeah, that's, all are good for me.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. And Lance and Craig, do you have any other?
Fine as is, every stay as is.
Is this about, I don't think it is.
I think you do, especially for creating new.
All right, so could I have a motion to approve the subcommittees as just discussed with the creation of a new superintendent evaluation sub, subcommittee? And the new representative and liaison assignments for the twenty five twenty six.
I think it's a new collective bargaining.
Okay, maybe. All right, so let me say that again. I'm looking for a motion to prove the subcommittees as discussed with a new collective bargaining subcommittee and all other representative and liaison assignments as just previously discussed.
Second.
Well, someone has to move that first. Oh, thank you.
Okay, moved, yeah.
All right, well, thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Dial?
Hi.
Mr. Evans?
Hi.
Mr. McClellan?
Hi.
And Chair Leskey?
Hi.
Okay, so that passes four zero. Thank you all for doing that. And then we, as our final item of public business tonight, we have some executive summaries that were given to us as a committee. And I believe Ms. Shannon is going to talk us through what that means and what we need to do next.
Yes, so you have in your packet several policies that are all connected to technology. Assistant Superintendent Scollins and Lisa Portili C along with other staff, including the technology department, have been working really for the last year to update these policies because several of them are outdated. And so what you have are two policies, policy E D C A dash C. E D C A dash C and E D C A dash D that are being combined and replaced by the new policy I J N D B. And that's our new acceptable use policy. This policy includes updated and required legal protections as well as language, and it um includes language around artificial intelligence that is aligned to our handbooks. Um the old policies, many of them did not include the updated language that came into account um in twenty sixteen. And so this new policy will supersede and eliminate both of those policies. Additionally, we are looking to just eliminate policy E D C A, which is the home use of laptop computers and other school on technology because it is really outdated and we actually give all of our educators of a laptop to use. So this policy would just cease to exist. And then not for but vote, but for um information is that we also have the responsible use technology agreement for students. This is aligned to the new policy, the new acceptable use policy. However, it more clearly outlines technology usage for our students, parents, caregivers and teachers. It's aligned to the handbooks and it's written in student friendly language as opposed to the policy which is written in more legal language. Um so again, that the responsible use agreement is not for vote because it doesn't need to be voted. It's not a policy. But it falls directly out of the acceptable use policy, which is going to be the one policy that we will have around technology right now. And again, this is just a first read. It is not for vote this evening. Um we will come back to it at our next meeting where we will be looking for a vote because we do want to have these in place for the start of the school year.
Can I ask an operational question around these policies?
Yes.
Um with the students.
Yes.
I as when I was reading them, I was gathering that a parent and their student or a care care adult should do that. I'm wondering if also though this information is shared by classroom teachers, um you know, depending upon the age level, because I feel like sometimes when mom and dad want to sit down and read something like this and review it, it's half paid attention to. But when your teacher sits down with you, um depending upon the age level, that um it's maybe taken a little bit more seriously.
Yes, so I think um at the elementary schools, the technology teacher
Mm hmm.
does that at the start of the school year. At the middle school, I think um if students have um Lindsay, they they get it, but also um it's something I can talk to Mr. Scott Letty about because it's something that as a principal, I would have addressed addressed at those opening meetings. And I think I know that Mr. Scott is actually planning to do a whole lot around technology at the opening meeting that he's having with students because of the cellphone um changes as well as really reiterating the A I handbook policy.
I think that's great. I think just making sure that our students know very clearly what is expected of them. As a parent, I quivered a little bit.
Absolutely.
Thinking that was my full only responsibility.
Yes.
Um wonderful. Any other comments or questions?
So um one thing I I I on the responsible use of technology agreement for students, I do like that this is put very kind of clear um language that that a student can understand. Just two uh quibbles.
Yeah.
One, there's a line in here that says CPS technology access for students is a privilege and not a right. Given that you probably can't go through school without access to technology, I think we might need to soften that a bit. Um because like, would we would we honestly take away someone's ability to?
I have seen that happen.
So like they couldn't access Google Classroom and all the things they need to.
We would have to accommodate that student. Um but I have experienced in my time teaching and being in administration where students have egregiously violated the policies in the process and needed to have their rights taken away.
So then that's then that and that is fine if that is um if that is in the cards.
And we would accommodate that student so that they still have access to education.
Yes.
Um the last one is, uh and I mentioned um on the students' ones, but I was very happy to see how how well written it is and very kind of kids and like the parents on their level. But when we get to uh I'm responsible for respecting the works of others, it's it's really just a link to the entire title seventeen of the U S code for copyright. Um and so I'm wondering if we could build out little higher level summaries of, you know, general copyright law says, don't ever steal other people's work, just just in a couple of sentences. So it's not just a link to.
Yeah, and and um that's in their handbooks more specifically, but I will bring that up to Dr. Scollins too. And that's the part that really um the principals dive into in those opening meetings and then teachers dive into as well.
Yeah, and and I think, you know, with plagiarism and whatnot, I think that's one that
Yeah.
It's worth spending some extra effort to.
I just wonder if we take some of the handbook language.
Yeah. And I definitely don't want to micromanage how it how it looks, but that that jumped out at me as I was reading this, that there's all this very student friendly language and all of a sudden like just a citation to U S code.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
So.
Gotta get reading, kids.
Yeah.
We're raising a generation of copyright lawyers.
Age of A I, who knows? I've got one tweak, uh Lance, if you're done.
I'm finished. Thank you.
All right. Um Chair Leskey, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh in the acceptable use policy, section one, bullet F, um seems pretty broad. Uh that 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 kind of caused me to to double step. Um is this in context, is this saying that we the schools reserve the right to examine the data on CPS technology devices, not personal devices? Or is it also personal devices? And if so, are we even allowed to do that?
Um so there are times where we would have to look at their personal devices because we are bring your own device district and they sign off that we are allowed to do that, and we do have the right as a school to do that. Um we have in certain circumstances, we would do that. And in other circumstances, we would potentially bring in others to do that, depending on the context. Um but we do have the right, just like we have the right to look in lockers and things like that. Um because they're using our Google network or our they're using our Wi Fi network and our Google suite. And so in order to access some of that, we need to look at their devices.
Yeah, I certainly understand anything that we provide, right? Uh software, you know, email, Google Drive, that's all part of the the CPS stack. Um if we're saying that if someone brings a phone in, we can search it. Uh I I'm I'm not sure. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak for it, but that 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 strikes me as a little bit more than what we should have the power, the authority to do, and also I'm not sure we can do.
Uh so I guess I was thinking, I wasn't thinking cell phones. I was talking about computers more. Um because that's really what we're we're talking about. Um that said, in some investigations with discipline, we do need to look at cell phones. And there are ways that school administrators can't do that. A lot of it require I and we can talk about that. Um because it involves, you know, calling parents and having a conversation and and talking with students, we don't just take and search, but there are times where um we need to see what's on somebody's phone at times. Um and you know, legally during investigations, we we do ask for those things. If a parent refused, then we would have further conversation around that. But in this day and age, with things that come up on cell phones, because the majority of discipline issues um at the secondary level end up being social media and technology related. They become key pieces of information in our investigations.
So I I I think we need to be careful about the words like investigations, right? We're not a law enforcement body. Uh you know, we don't have, you know, a lot of things. I know we have that, but I I think we need to also understand that certain things, if there are certain levels, fall into a different kind of category of of enforcement. Uh and while I do understand the the attraction to having access to device information, I'm also concerned that if we're in someone's personal device and there's something we shouldn't see and we don't have the right to see, that's a problem for us. So I I'm not, if this is language that we're getting from from somewhere else, or it's coming us from 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 Massachusetts, educate, whatever, but this this overly broad sentence makes me really uncomfortable. Um sorry, I I was put, I was, I put a slant on that. This sentence, I feel is broad. It makes me uncomfortable.
So I I'll, we can look at it and run it by our legal team. Um and then maybe you and I can have a offline conversation around the investigative process in schools um and legally what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. Um the handbook outlines some of that, but I I will say like using the word investigation is a term that we do use legally in schools. Uh because we often have to conduct multiple investigations um disciplinary and even legally, they're they're called investigations, a title nine investigation, a title six investigation. Um we hold hearings. Um it's it's very.
Okay, I I.
Legal process.
All right, I've got a lot to learn and thank you for that invitation. I'll pick up on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, we will revisit this.
Next meeting next week.
Next week when we meet. Um I do not have any topics that I have not anticipated that I would like to bring forward, so we will move on to the approval of minutes. We do have minutes that were distributed many moons ago um from our May twenty first meeting. Um Mr. Dial, you were not attend in attendance at that meeting, but Mr. McClellan, Mr. Evans and I were. Um so and that would be a quorum, so we can vote to approve those minutes. Um
May meeting? I wasn't appointed until June, right?
You were. It was an early town meeting this year.
Yeah, I think you were at the last May meeting.
It was your first meeting, I believe.
Okay, let me um well, the minute say I was there, the minute say what's um can you give me the date? I'm looking through the drive right now.
Uh five twenty one.
Okay, cool. Yeah, well, and it's me, so I said corrected.
Right. Um so I would just need a motion to approve those uh meeting uh those meeting minutes as distributed in a second, and then the three of us can vote.
So 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 moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh motion made by Mr. Evans, a second by Mr. McClellan. Um roll call vote, Mr. Evans.
Three of them die.
Mr. McClellan?
Aye.
Jen Leskey, I. Um those minutes from five twenty one have been approved.
And I'll abstain for the record.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Dial. And Mr. Dial abstains with one abstention. Um and finally, we do have a reason to enter into executive session for reason number three um to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Um we will not be returning to public session afterwards. Um so quickly, sub a motion to adjourn the public port a portion of this meeting and move into executive session for reason three and not reconvene in public um session.
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Dial, Mr. Dial?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. McClellan?
Aye.
Ms. Leskey, I. Um so thank you, everyone. Um co-hasset. Um good night. We are moving into executive session. We will see you again until next week.
Well, in our school community, we might see some of them around town because we live in town.
Sorry. All right. So we may see you around town.
Is Corey not participating in the?
Well, we do need him, don't we?
I mean, technically, we don't because there are three of you.
Yeah, as a matter of a quorum.